Welcome, everyone, to tonight's regular board meeting. And tonight's meeting, it will have an extra special meeting tonight. As we will stop, as we begin our new business in the meeting with a moment to remember our beloved sitting board member, Captain Terry McCloskey. Captain, as we all know him, passed away a few short days ago. And his presence will never be forgotten. We have, in his place here today, we have a beautiful rose, a reflection definitely of Terry's love for this district and all the people that he had served here. And so he left behind a great legacy, and we will stop and pause during the meeting to remember that. And along with us here today, we do have some special people that we're super happy that they have joined us. We have Michael and Susan McCloskey are here, along with Sarah Coppola. And thank you for joining us here tonight. Also with us, we have John Ashley from WASAB, Executive Director. He has come to also pay tribute to Terry. And we also have Rob Brown from NEXUS, who we will be part of the agenda further down. So many people have traveled great distances, and we appreciate you all joining us tonight. So if we could all start by standing up and saying Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Terry, if you could start us off with Administrator's Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
Yes, the agenda was posted to Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp via the Sugar Camp School Secretary, the town of Three Lakes by email, the town of Monaco by email, and the Demmer Library. And the media notified include the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. Any amendments for tonight's agenda?
Yes, we just got a call about an hour ago that Mr. Cordula, Tim Cordula, who was going to be with us on Agenda Item F, to speak to us about the collaboration with Carls Transport is ill, so he will not be here tonight. So we will take that Agenda Item off and move it to march.
All right, so with that amendment, I will seek motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the amendment as stated by Terry.
Second. All right, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any other further questions? Hearing none, a call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes 4-0. Next, we go to routine approvals, approving the minutes of the January 25, 2023 regular Someone prepared to make a motion approving those minutes?
In the second paragraph where it says others present, J. Zeus is listed twice. Do we need to fix that?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Michelle.
Any other changes, Michelle?
No.
Make a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25, 2023 regular meeting with the side correction.
Very good.
Second.
All right, so motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any other comments, questions, edits? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes 4-0. We're going to approve the voucher/cheque register for the period of January 20, 2023 through February 9, 2023.
I'd like to make the motion to approve checks dated January 20, 2023 through February 9, 2023 for accounts payable checks number 222-300-158 through 222-300-170. Regular checks number 127679 through 127785 with voided check 127175. And manual checks number 5421 through 5428 in the amount of $502,619.58. And ACH payroll checks number 900039508 through 900039625. And regular payroll checks number 59271 through 59272 in the amount of $155,272.85 for a total amount of $657,892.40.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes 4-0. All right, next, we will go to public comments. Now, for tonight, I will be straying from our policy that we will allow anyone that wishes to speak to, the remembrance of Captain Terry McCloskey, to speak during when we hit that Agenda Item. But for those that have come to have comments on any other Agenda Items, I will take those comments now. So would anybody like to speak, starting off with the remembrance of Terry? Okay, how about any other Agenda Items? Okay, very good. So next, we'll go to Administrator's Report, Civil Rights Compliance Review. Terry?
Okay. I wanted to make you aware that the district has been notified that we will be undergoing a civil rights compliance review, which you would more commonly know as an audit. We received this information in late December that we would be one of the three small schools in the state that would be reviewed for our data. I did put some information in the packet for you. I'm just going to kind of briefly reread that for you and for our public so they can hear what it's about. It really comes down to is we accept federal funds, and the civil rights compliance in this situation is we are identified because we receive CTE funds as for our career and tech education programming. And just if that doesn't sound real familiar to you, we receive about $5,200 a year, and with that money, we turn it over to a consortium, CISA 9. We're in the consortium with other districts, and they manage the money. However, this audit is very specific to Three Lakes School District data and our census data, and I just wanted you to have a little bit of a feel for it is a very intensive project that we're undergoing. It will involve a lot of manpower. What this is going to do is they're going to be looking very closely at our documentation, our policies, our practices, and we will be submitting the requested information to them. It's going to fall most heavily on Justin Zeus and myself as far as pulling the information together. And then we will rely on Nikki Maney and Jen West and our secretarial staff for other bits and pieces of information and data that will be requested. Like I said, I don't want to mislead you. It is very intensive. It's going to look very closely at everything from gender, sex, race, ethnicity, disability, or language, English proficiency, and are economically disadvantaged. Out of this, there will also be a time when they're going to take the documents, review them. They're going to come up and do a site visit, an actual footprint visit, and they will do interviews with staff and students. And then they will make a findings, as it's called, as to what we may be needing to improve, what we may be having to clarify better. And then we'll have a year of a compliance to make sure that is in place. The reason we were identified as, I just wanted to give you a little more heads up because it was a little bit perplexing to me, as we're not a real big data source, I wouldn't think. But they look at three different areas, the small, the middle, and the large school districts. And then they immediately, from the data, they take off any schools that are already under any kind of review or investigation for any other reason, for like IDA, EAA, or Special Ed situations, like if you were identified for Special Ed situations or any other kind of grant information, those schools are eliminated. And then they looked more at that general, middle-of-the-road schools that are left over, and they look at the data in these categories and see if there is any areas where there seems to be an over identification or under identification. In studying the data to this point, it's a very, it's not what I would call significantly, statistically significant from my old days of back in, you know, when we took the classes that taught us about all of these statistics and such. However, we fall into that category that we were the one they identified, so DPI has identified Three Lakes. It is not a situation where we can say because of the intensity of the manpower that will be required or lack thereof to do it, we would have a hardship situation. That does not apply. We will do it. So they asked us to turn it over to our team, to which I said, "You are looking at the team, Justin and I," as they said, "You've got a CTE department. Go ahead and divide and conquer." And I said, "This is us." So I just wanted to bring you up to speed as to what that's about. And should you want to learn more about this as we're going through, we can make it an Agenda Item. But I wanted you to be aware that this is something that was not expected, and it has to be done. And that is the report.
Did they tell you when they're coming?
They are coming May 10, I believe it is, for the onsite visit. All of our documentation needs to be turned in by April 15. Easy day to remember.
Yeah.
And then they will be onsite for staff, student interviews, and review of building and facilities.
All right, well, thank you for all your extra work, right? Justin's smiling back there, yeah. Keep the smile, right? It does go a long way. All right, well, thank you for that review and report. Onto new business. So our first stop here is a moment of silence in remembrance of Captain Terry McCloskey. Following our moment of silence, John Ashley has just made the trip up here, and we're going to allot him some time to share his remembrance of Terry and of all the years they've got to work together down at the WASAB, and for which Terry served not only our district but many, many districts up here in northern Wisconsin, and served them admirably. And so we'll look forward to hearing John's comments on that here in just a moment. So if we could all just take time to ourselves and think about the things that, I guess, stick out in our mind, some of the great things that Terry has done for this district, our students, our community. Yeah, great man. And somewhere in the back of my mind, I did hear Terry say, "Let's get on with this." John Ashley, could we ask you to stand up and introduce yourself, like the welcome John Ashley from WASAB? And thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts and such about Terry.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for the opportunity. So then I get through this, I'm going to read it, and I still hope I can get through it. I'm thankful to the Three Lakes School Board and the Superintendent Terry Manning to be allowed to say a few words of remembrance for Captain Terry McCloskey. The captain joined the Three Lakes School Board on April 3, 2007. He served on the WASB Board of Directors from 2012 to 2023. There's a little story there, because normally you serve three terms, which are three years piece, so that'd be nine years. The captain figured out a way to serve 10, because he finished out somebody else's. But that's just him, boys. I want to acknowledge first and foremost his wife, Mary Ann, and his children. Mike and Susan, Sarah are here this evening. They were the most important focus of the captain's life. I know all of them brought him joy and happiness. He was the proudest father you would ever meet. In particular, his wife, Mary Ann, who would join him on many occasions as he traveled around Wisconsin and the U.S. on behalf of his role as our WASB president in 2017. So on behalf of our Board of Directors, I thank his family for sharing Captain McCloskey with us. His work on the Three Lakes School Board, leadership of the WASB, his advocacy on a national level on behalf of all of Wisconsin's students would not have been possible without their extreme generosity. The time he spent away from them must have been difficult, but because of their selflessness, he was able to accomplish great things for public education. It would take too long to list all of the captain's accomplishments, but I want to single out his military service as a member of the Navy. It shows how important service was to the captain. It was in his DNA. My own father served in the Army and the Navy, and it should surprise no one that all the captain was interested in was my dad's Navy experience. To say he loved all things Navy would be a tremendous understatement. His Navy experience made him the man he was, the one we respected. He loved the Three Lakes School District. Let me repeat that. He loved the Three Lakes School District. He was proud of the district's accomplishments, in particular their leadership as one of the premier fab labs in Wisconsin. He was the biggest supporter of the students, teachers, and staff of the district. He carried that support forward when he became Region 2 Director. He joined our board and was able to represent the interests of northern school districts with a passion and commitment that continues to this day. The districts in this region have the captain to thank for sharing their concerns and issues. Many of those issues are unique to the norm, and he helped legislators in Madison and Washington, D.C. to better understand them. If you knew the captain, you know how formidable he could be. He was not someone who would take no for an answer or be ignored. Public education has been under attack, and the captain was on our side, fighting to increase support for Wisconsin schools. As the WASB president in 2017, he galvanized our association by emphasizing legislative advocacy. He traveled the state to meet with legislators, as well as going to Washington, D.C. to lobby. On a personal note, the captain treated everyone with respect and dignity. He and I were as different from each other as two people could probably be, but he was my most trusted supporter and ally. Not everyone treats people with the fairness and duty that the captain exhibited. His contributions will live on because his work for students was an investment in our future. His legacy to public education in Wisconsin is a gift we can honor and cherish. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Captain Terry McCloskey.
Definitely reflects Terry's interest in pursuing, improving in education for our students. And he was definitely a fighter, no doubt about it. And so he served his country, his community exceptionally well. And so Terry, did you have anything that you wanted to share? I've got a few things that I can share later on and board members after Terry, so.
Just a few brief comments. I do plan on speaking on Friday. I guess I'm deciding whether or not anybody likes it. I'm going to. I just want to say that I found the captain, who allowed me to call him Terry, because I am also Terry, so I felt very privileged. And I was just that, you know, little blonde girl Terry instead of the captain Terry. We developed, I think, a very strong relationship. It wasn't always that way, and I will talk a little bit more about that. I think I was probably, he was a skeptic. He let me know in a couple of ways that he didn't want me to bring all the Rylander new-fangled ideas to Three Lakes, because Three Lakes was just fine. And I said, "I'm here because I'm part of Three Lakes." And we kind of developed what I'm going to call now almost a tradition, but it's not a tradition. It was a routine. I felt it today, as I mentioned. It's Wednesday, I'm looking at my clock, it's 10:30. Where's my call? Because he would call me, or I would, you know, know that was coming, and we would talk about what the board packet was, and he always opened with, "What do you need from me? What do you got from me?" You know? And we would talk it through, and it was just part of how we did things. Terry was also, as John mentioned, he was somebody that I reflected with when I needed to talk a little bit more about a decision or something that might be happening politically or a decision that was maybe being made. He was always very much the person who turned it back around, not giving you the answers, but also giving you the opportunity to say, "What are possible solutions or resolutions that might be an option for this situation?" Very, very quiet when he was sitting there thinking, but don't you miss a beat. He was listening, and he was thinking, and he did not miss very much, because he would ask me about, "Well, during the board meeting when this came up," and I'm like, "Oh, please, let me find my notes." You know? He remembered better than I did. He has served us well. He will be greatly missed. We will always think of Terry, and I thank the family for sharing his time of service with us, because he was all about service. And I think families sometimes feel that affect the most, but it was for the betterment of the rest of the community, the country, and the world. So I thank you.
Yes.
The school board meant a lot to him. He, I mean, it meant a lot to him. He just loved participating, and he found it important. His last race that he had, that was super important. He was dealing with his health issues, and that was right up there, you know?
Yeah. And it didn't slow him down, he just kept going.
I know. To the very end.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? Michelle, Stacy, Josh?
I'm just thankful for all that he's taught us. You know, I'm new to this, and I'll miss his comforting face when I had a nerve or a concern, so I will miss that immensely. And I apologize that I won't be able to make it on Friday, but I work at the hospital. We're super busy, so I can't quite sneak away, but I will be thinking of you guys and send my love. Thank you.
I have a few comments here. I think really an amazing man. How many of us, I mean, when we get to 68, are going to start a career in student advocacy, right? And that's what this person did. He was appointed to our board 16 years ago, and I was fortunate enough to be able to work with him with 16 years. And always interested in doing whatever we could do for our students, first and foremost. How is it going to help our students? And that was Terry, dedicated to investing our students' future and offering as many opportunities as we can for our kids. Firm believer in a fab lab program, big-time advocate there. Early supporter of our district creating a fitness center open for all school personnel and community members. I'm not going to list them all, but I got a few. As treasurer, he was very instrumental in updating the organizational structure of all of our school districts' club funds. Sometimes a little unpredictable, something would come up, and it wouldn't even be on the agenda, and he'd ask a question, "Well, what are we going to do about this?" But that was Terry's way of getting things done, and it prompted things. One of those was the downtown sign that we have, that we share with the town here of Three Lakes. And Terry was a staunch advocate of getting the school advertised downtown, because most people don't see our little board here on the corner. It's far removed from the main line of traffic. Terry wanted to make sure that the community got to see some of the events that were going on at the school. And so, and as John had pointed out here, beyond this community, Terry made an extreme impact in many, many ways. And, you know, fighting for funding, you know, we all recognize the school funding formula has its shortcomings, and he figured out another way. Student varsity, transportation, I mean, he was at it. He was looking, do whatever he could to support rural school districts in northern Wisconsin. And then sat on the CISA 9 board for, I don't know how many years, many years. So echoing comments from Terry and John, it takes more than one person. It takes the family to support that. And I get it. It is an immense amount of work and time and effort on Terry's behalf, but he can only do that because of the support and love behind him by his family. And so thank you all for that support, to give Terry that, you know, encouragement when he needed it, no doubt, you know? Because I'm sure you miss many family events, because, "I got to be down in Madison, or I got to be here to testify," or whatever. He made those commitments, and it's because of you. Yeah, it's just, he was a great example of commitment. And, you know, we all have heard this cliche, "Captain goes down with the ship." But what does that really reflect? It reflects that he's not going to do anything other than put others first, and that was Terry. And I think because of Terry, and he fulfilled that promise so well, that not only our district, but many other districts will navigate those challenging seas and become far better for it. So. So Terry, thank you for everything you've done for all of us. Never be forgotten. And so, you know, it's, it's hard to say goodbye, but we may not have to. He will always be here. So John, thank you. Terry, anyone? There is a, is it one o'clock on Friday?
Yes.
So please, anyone that can attend, it'd be great to see them. All of you surround the family with your love and the support. So. Thanks. John, thanks.
Yes.
All right. So we will go next to the March mean date of May, excuse me, May, all right? March. The other M month. March 15th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, Three Lakes. So nothing new there, right?
Nope, that's our regular board meeting. We will proceed as scheduled.
All right, very good. Next, we have the second Friday pupil membership count.
That information was included in your packet and I've asked Caleb to speak to that for you tonight. You maybe saw some shifts in the numbers, but there is a reason. And Caleb, I'll let you just talk a little bit today.
Yeah, sure. So I'll just give you the quick and dirty details and if you have some questions, you can answer them. But the overall enrollment, so butts and seats enrollment went from 519 to 518. So we lost one student there. But the membership as a whole went up eight students and the membership is really that key driver for the state funding formula. So seeing that go up eight is a good thing. That translates then to an FTE going from 500 to 507 and that FTE is the actual number that goes into that formula. It's kind of an interesting situation. We, we lost a lot of open enrollment in, but they became residents. So it was, it was overall in that good thing there. So yeah, it was positive, positive count there. Although when you look at our open enrollment versus out, we're now, we're now negative there again, but it's because they became residents.
Nothing wrong with making them permanent.
No, no, they're more valuable that way.
That's a good thing. All right, anything else to add there?
No.
Okay, very good. Next, consider approval of personnel report of new hires and resignations.
Okay, we have the following resignations. Melinda Gold, assistant high school volleyball coach. Jack Wales, boys soccer coach. William Wolosik Jr., assistant basketball coach. And hirings would be Dan Shepley, softball assistant coach. Scott Chapulinski, junior high wrestling coach. Michelle Brown, head golf coach. And David Ditzler, assistant golf coach. And I should make a note that Ms. Melinda Gold is Melinda Gold Stantz. I'm not sure why.
That's why she signed her letter.
Oh, okay. In case you were wondering exactly who that is.
All right, I will seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
That's okay.
Motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None heard, motion passes four zero. On to E, consider hiring Nexus Solutions for development of the Three Lakes School District facilities long range plan. You want to start us off?
Sure. So we have been in this process for a while now. If you recall, Rob presented to us, I believe it was at Sugar Camp meeting. It's been about a year, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say it's been about that. And we looked at a couple of different options and Rob was able to come up tonight. We have been talking for quite some time about long range planning for facilities, maintenance, an overall review of our entire district. Rob has shared a contract with us. I have included it with you. And in my directions for you when reviewing the contract, I asked you to really reflect on it deeply, formulate your questions. It's been a while since we've had the presentation. I feel like we had a really good feel for the overall concept of what Nexus Solutions offers to us, but with the contract in front of you now, we can ask so much more specific questions and how it will really play out and impact the district. This is not a light commitment to make. When you're talking just like a long range plan, you're looking at a plan that involves phases. It involves, you know, upfront work and a lot of behind the scenes work. And what we would want to be coming out of this process is kind of like the instruction manual for this is how we're going to approach our facilities, our maintenance, our planning on almost a cycle as to what repairs will be, end of life mechanical is what I really worry about, you know? It takes boilers to keep a school warm. So with that, I am turning it back to you, Mike, and let you direct it, but I'm just very pleased, Rob, thank you for making such a long haul up this way.
My pleasure.
We appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. So what we have in front of us is a contract from Nexus and explores two phases. One is more of an investigative stage where we're going through and making a comprehensive facilities improvement, I guess, investigation and coming up with a plan thereafter. And then the phase two component is the implementation of that plan. So I've got lots of things to go over and I'm sure you guys do too. So I think what I would ask, Rob, if you would, you have a copy of it with you, I assume, as well?
I don't.
Okay, all right.
I could actually hand this one.
Okay. If you would, just, I guess, in just a couple of minutes, just go over some of the highlights of the contract and then we can start digging into some of the details.
For sure.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. And so on page one, the first half of the page, the bullets, I'm talking with Terry and after the review of that preliminary report roughly a year ago, Terry and I talked through a scope of work that would be advantageous for the school district. And that scope of work is the study. So for all of your facilities, from your lot lines in, from the grass tops to the rooftops, all building systems, as well as educational adequacy and the other items that are noted here inclusive of outdoor facilities, athletic spaces, athletic fields, safety and security, ADA, traffic flow, all of these things would be part of that 10-year plan. The idea with phase one is to provide that plan so that you have something regardless of what is done in phase two, that we have something to, in partnership, work together on year over year. And so then certainly year over year, things may change, your student counts may change, your directives, how you want to educate your kids regardless of the program may change. All of these things year over year would be updated. The bottom half of the first page talks about what Nexus commits to doing. And then if we flip it over, at this point, the top part of the page starts talking about the difference between phase one and phase two. Phase one is again, the development of this 10-year comprehensive plan. Phase two, as Mike alluded, is the actual implementation. So as part of phase one, there, we work at risk. And so we believe based on our relationship and based on the, if you will, opportunity here, that frankly, there's, we believe with the relationship that we hope, the trust that we hope to continue to build upon, that we would ultimately move into a phase two of some sort. Phase one will include 10 years worth of opportunity. It'll be up to the district, the school board ultimately to determine what that phase two would be. It could be something small. It could be something substantial. We will also engage the community in these conversations so we won't be making these decisions from an ivory tower, so to speak. And of course, including teacher, staff and your students in these conversations. The middle of page two talks about compensation and you'll see how it is currently broken down. I will highlight though, unlike most other firms, you only pay for the services where they are implemented. So for instance, architecture, if you have a $10 million project, if only 20% of that $10 million project is architecture, you only pay architecture on $2 million worth of work. Unlike most other firms you may work with, you pay the architect a fee, but then you would also pay the engineering and so on and so forth. And that creates markup by markup, which takes away dollars from the ultimate, ultimately the dollars that would go into construction. Similarly with engineering, if there's $6 million of engineering, ultimately you would only pay fees on that $6 million versus the full $10 million project and so on. Let's see here. And then moving to page three, page three, that top paragraph talks about a, if you will, a walkaway fee. And so if Nexus does not deliver on everything noted on the bottom half of page one that talks about what Nexus will deliver, you owe us nothing because we haven't, basically it's essentially a breach of contract. If for some reason we do everything we tell you we're going to do as part of this comprehensive plan and you choose to not move forward with anything, the walkaway fee is $7,450 based on a five cents per square foot charge at 149,455 square feet. That's the square footage of both facilities at Sugar Camp as well as in Three Lakes. But also with that, you know, our, again, our intent is to not only do phase one, but to do phase two. Certainly if you choose to walk away, what this, what we ask and what this agreement lays out is that anything that we lay out from a design standpoint, concepts that we come up with based on the work that we do, that you would not implement any of those for three years. Frankly, it's the intent is to protect our, the work that we put into it and not go do anything together.
Questions?
I guess I'll start if that's all right. My first question is in regards to the delays section, number eight down on page, page Who is going to be responsible for holding subcontractors and contractors to their timelines? It says that Nexus will not be held responsible for delays, whatever it is, which I understand the act of gods, but the suppliers, the supplies sort of thing, will it be up to the school district or will you be overseeing contractors and subcontractors?
Great question. And what I, what I hope to do is to delineate between phase one and phase two. Phase two is when we would go into formal design, assuming we're fortunate enough that there's funding for a project. Then we get into the actual architecture and the actual bidding documents. And as a professional services firm, we don't turn wrenches, pound nails or any of that. And so when we get to that phase two part, that's when there'd be more of a concern about delays in contract and subcontractors not doing their work. Ultimately Nexus is responsible for the full timeline. This document is not that contract later. So this first part is the actual engineering study. And the only delay that, I've been doing this for 27 years, the only delay in this type of work has only happened during COVID.
Sure. So this document is really just strictly phase one?
Comprehensive study, correct.
Okay.
And when we get to that phase two, there are architectural standard documents, AIA.
Yep.
And those standard documents is what we'll be talking about then.
Okay, okay. My apologies.
No, no, it's a very fair question. It's a, there's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
Mike, may I?
Go ahead, sir.
If, so if I, if I were in your chair, a question I might ask is number one on page one, furthermore Nexus will complete a detailed facility audit for their cost estimates. What does that mean? And so what you'll see with this final report, not only a comprehensive review with detail, providing what the potential concerns are or potential improvements, substantiating detail, but also, so for instance, it'll be this building, we'll have mechanical and then there'll be a series of line items covering with granularity each of the very improvements that you all will have an opportunity to work through as well as administration. What are those things that are most important to you or least important to you? We'll also provide good, better, best options because it's not, it's not for Nexus to determine how you or your committee wants to spend your taxpayer dollars. It's for us to provide options and justification based on the potential value. There may be certain things that you may think, well, we need to make some improvement, but you know, we're happy with the Chevett solution and other things where this is important enough to us where, you know what, we're probably, you know, thinking about maybe the higher end Buick or Cadillac, here we go. Figure card. And so, but we'll provide all of that in that breakdown. We do use not only square footage pricing, but we also work with, because we, last year we did $280 million worth of work, some of which was up north here. And so we're going to use that book of knowledge as a reality check to the pricing that we create so that we know that we're not low, not high, we're in that good, in a good sweet spot. And you'll see that line by line by line and then ultimately we'll use that to hopefully create a project.
Talking about scope, one of the questions I had, Rob, was we've already identified certain projects and we've gotten quotes in some of them.
Yeah.
Can we say that you don't have to roll these into this discussion? And, because, you know, we've already taken some steps toward, you know, directions of taking some improvements. Can we take some of these things out of that scope? So that's something that we have that option to do, correct?
For sure. And if I may add on to that, and so when we have this 10-year plan, we'll likely identify those things as well. We'll be able to provide additional justification for you. And then whoever you choose to work with, maybe provide additional detail that might drive that price down. And we're anticipating there'll be other things in our comprehensive report that you haven't identified yet that you'll likely want to do on your own as part of that 10-year plan. The real thing we want to make sure that we avoid is the district taking action on like say a parking lot, but then we're doing heavy mechanical work and we have these heavy pieces of equipment driving on your brand new parking lot. You know, your taxpayers won't be too happy if you do something and then destroy it or we do something and have to demolish it just to do a bigger project. So we want to make sure that we have things lined up properly. We also want to be able to take advantage of economies of scale. And so where, like say you have a small section of the sidewalk that you want to replace or curving or something, but if we're doing a more substantial project, we'll be able to not only bid that work, but all of the work and then on per square foot basis, drive that cost down and then have more people bid it, which will also then drive that cost down. So it depends on your level of importance, we'll work with you and certainly let you guys take advantage of whatever it is you'd like to get done.
Okay. All right. So is that something we identify?
or curving or something, but if we're doing a more substantial project, we'll be able to not only bid that work, but all of the work, and then on per square foot basis, drive that cost down, and then have more people bid it, which will also then drive that cost down. So it depends on your level of importance, we'll work with you and certainly let you guys take advantage of whatever it is you'd like to get done.
Okay. All right. So is that something we identify on the contract somewhere that's?
So that would come with the second contract? All this does right now is gives us the ability to do that study.
Okay. So even though it's included in the study, we can keep it out of phase two?
Absolutely can.
Okay.
Absolutely. And if it, you know, if you'd like to incorporate something in here to that effect, you certainly can.
But if we do that, I guess I just want to make sure I'm clear. On page three, says if Nexus completes the work as described above, and the district decides not to implement all or portions of the comprehensive facilities improvement program, the district agrees to pay Nexus an amount not to exceed $7,450 within 60 days of receiving the comprehensive report. So we talked that, you know, these projects that we have already, you know, identified that we're going to go ahead and do something with, if they're in phase one, but we're not going to implement them, you know, through Nexus, does that trigger this, because we're not implementing all?
No, and that's why it also says some, and I'm not an attorney, it says some or all. The purpose, so for instance, if you choose, the district chooses to do some of that work on your own, which I would hope you would, being frank, but there are other things like this, the boilers, some other major building systems, or the early learning center that we've talked about briefly, you know, perhaps those are things that you do implement. Our goal is to build a long-term relationship with the district to help you with your 10-year plan, and ultimately which we hope, part of that is the architecture design of some project. If there are little things here and there that you choose to do on your own, so you should, and as good stewards of the, you know, local taxpayers, you need to be able to do that stuff.
Further down in that same paragraphs, says assuming the district does proceed with phase two, actual development costs will be rolled into the total cost of the program. Just if you can give me a definition of what development costs actually could be?
Sure. And so Nexus is working at risk. We're not going to ask anything from the district until there's a funding, a bucket of funds, whether it's referendum or some other source of funding, because we don't want to affect your fund ten or any of your other funds, but you know, for that matter. And so what'll happen is that the architecture, the engineering fees that go into that comprehensive study work, any other third-party consultants like IT, perhaps, and this list is, includes outdoor spaces, athletic spaces, you know, there may be a third-party consultant there as well, nutrition. And so those types of consulting fees, as an example, would be part of those development costs that ultimately would be rolled in at the time of that phase two contract. Also all the public opinion polling, you know, our intent would be to send a survey to every mailbox in your school district because we want their input. And then the other community engagement that'll come out of this, those, whatever those costs are, will be rolled into this as well.
Okay. So if we do proceed with phase two, these costs will be rolled into the total cost of the program?
And broken, broken out and transparent. So you see, you know, here's, you know, basically the construction, hard costs, soft costs, and then those development fees would be separated.
Okay.
So you'll see that detail. That transparency, as a school member myself, I mean, that transparency is important. You know, you have to answer to your taxpayers. And by the way, if there's, even with all the transparency, the granularity that we provide, if there's something that you need additional detail on, you know, we're happy to provide that too.
Okay. All right. So if we do proceed, then these costs will be rolled in. If we don't proceed?
Then it's the walkaway fee.
It's the 7450.
Yep.
I got more questions, but somebody else got more questions?
I do, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it. Kind of, kind of taking on to that, if there, if there are items that we have already, you know, expressed that, you know, we want to move forward on, and again, if you guys recognize it as well, if we decide not to go on with phase two and where we're, I mean, if it's something that we had recognized prior to you, are we still able to move forward with that part of the project?
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly. Deferred, deferred maintenance items are not part of design. If we do something mechanically, if we do something unique, then, you know, we'd have to have a conversation, but I mean, roofing, carpeting, casework, you know, site work, I mean, all of these things that you typically with flooring, all of these things that you need to do, I mean, those aren't, I mean, there's no real design work in that.
Okay.
Rob, middle of page two, talks about the architectural construction costs, engineering construction costs, and then it's got, please note, architectural and engineering services are not additive. Just want to make sure that I'm on the same page. So just if you'd give us the explanation on how you see that.
Yeah. And so the intent of this is, you know, you will only pay fees on those services in which you use or when which you use. So architecture, again, a $10 million project, if only $2 million of that is architectural related, then you pay the architecture fee only on $2 million.
And?
Not the full 10.
And then your fees on top of that?
No, these are our fees. This is, there's nothing on top of this.
But, I mean, okay, so on a $10 million project, 2 million is architectural, I'm just throwing numbers, okay? So your fee basically would be the 6, 6.75% of that architectural?
Of the 2 million.
Of the 2 million, correct. Okay. I just, just want to make sure I was on the same page, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Okay.
And this is, if you don't do it every day, I'm sure like what you all do professionally, it's not easy.
Same page, couple bullet points down. Compensation for project management supervision-related expenses will be considered a reimbursable general condition and part of the project's construction costs. If you could just give the explanation on that.
Sure. And so reimbursable expenses as a, for instance, temporary heat, you know, some printing, you know, things that frankly, you wouldn't want to pay a percentage on because it would be more costly than if you just paid as a reimbursable. And again, all of that would be provided in detail. So you'd have all that information. And again, as far as the reimbursable piece, certainly more applicable with the phase two, the actual construction and design portion than it would be with this.
Does phase one basically just explore the needs of the facility's improvement? Does it go beyond that in terms of seeing what the community will support?
It's part of that as well.
That's part of that as well.
Yeah. And so phase one essentially goes up to the referendum date, and assuming, assuming it's a referendum, you know, but for the sake of conversation. So as of the, hopefully the successful conclusion of a referendum, beyond that is when we get into negotiation around phase two in that contract for that work. By the end of, by the time we get to referendum, of course, you'll have your 10-year plan, you'll have selected with the community's engagement, what subset of that overall potential is that you want to tackle now. And then there'll be a task force, you know, again, there'll be mailers and stuff that will go to every mailbox in your community, as well as a survey that we've been talking about, and there's some other stuff we've been doing too as well. But all of that is part of phase one. Phase two is the actual implementation of whatever that work is with funding. And I don't know if this helps, but that on the bottom of page one, this Furthermore Nexus Will, you know, provides, you know, some of the specific items that are included as part of phase one.
Okay.
While we're in this phase two part, just the third bullet point, compensation for commissioning, I'm sorry, fourth bullet point, compensation for construction management services computed at two and a half percent of total construction cost. Now that would be if the, so we would pay the 6.75 on the agricultural portion, which again, going back to that $2 million number, so there'd be another two and a half percent on top of that, 6.75 of the architectural?
Yes. And so as far as the commissioning services, that would only be applicable to your mechanical systems and some of your electrical, but the commission?
Next, next one, construction management.
Well, there we go. Yes, and so the construction management art would be, you know, having the people here managing the project, managing bid date, you know, we would, in both Sugar Camp and here, we'd have job trailers, actually managing that work. And so this is the construction part, the, you know, making sure the subcontract, the accountability on timeline and all the subs, that is that.
Okay.
And the purpose of having all of this here, this part of phase one, along with that same theme of transparency, we didn't want to not have it here, and then get to phase two and then say, by the way, this is what our fee structure looks like. It's just better to have that conversation now.
For sure. Appreciate it. And projected timeline for phase one would be?
So assuming the agreement is approved tonight, you know, I have a kickoff meeting scheduled early next week with my team, and we'll lay out that timeline. I would say typically, it's probably going to take us nine months to actually come up with that comprehensive plan. Could be a little bit sooner, but ultimately our goal is to, you know, make sure that we engage the community a little bit along the way, make sure administration is engaged, the board is engaged, and all that straight work, it takes some time. So it's roughly about nine months. And also that, you know, if I may, would be dependent on if there's, if there's a targeted referendum date. And so in '24, you can either go in April or in November, sometimes you can go like in February, depending on what's happening with the primaries. But if there's a key date that you've had in mind, you know, I'm happy to create a timeline for you between now and when a potential, potential referendum date, referendum date would be. So you would know from this moment to that referendum date, all of the steps and the anticipated timing, so you guys would know. And I'd be happy to come back as often as you would like to provide an update on our progress. You know, certainly Terry will know what's going on, but I'm happy to be here as well.
Okay.
Have you been with Nexus all 27 years?
No, I've been with Nexus six.
Six. Do you know an estimate of how many schools you've worked with?
Oh, gosh.
Too many to?
Yeah. I mean, so as far as, you know, so Caddo Falls around here, Lockview, Flumbeau, just now talking with Northland Pines, and then you guys, of course. Northland Pines is just starting. And then Wausau, D.C. Everest, Stevens Point, just thinking around here. I mean, I'm happy to give you a list of references if you're interested.
I was just curious, I have to talk to your head.
Yep.
And all, I'm assuming all school projects have been successful?
Certainly I'd encourage you to talk to them, but from my perspective, yeah. I mean, and it's, it's not so much, I mean, of course I'm gonna tell you, yeah. You know, but it's, it's not so much where you've had success as much as it is where you've stubbed your toe and how you've recovered. And, you know, certainly every project has, you know, a moment where you stubbed your toe and, you know, how do you, how do you, Nexus, how do you, Rob, go about making sure that when you stub your toe, the owner feels, the district and the community feel hurt, and that there's a satisfactory resolution? And I can give you references on that as well. It's important for me personally to make sure that I'm physically here. I mean, it'd be easy to do Zoom, but it's, you know, if you're going to work with, you know, or administration and community, you physically have to be present.
Right.
This is something I find important.
So Rob, just, I guess, let me see if I can sum it up this way. So if we, if we come to agreement here with the contract, and we go through phase one, and if we decide not to implement and move forward with the things that you've recommended, we pay 7450.
Yes.
That's the walkaway.
That's the walkaway. And then, you know, the three-year on the design work.
Right.
You know, certainly we wouldn't want to get in the way of any deferred maintenance. And legally, I would think, good, you know, unless there's some unique mechanical design that.
Sure.
You know, but yeah.
So that's the walkaway if we don't proceed with phase two. If we proceed with phase two, we don't pay the 7450, correct?
Correct. Correct.
But whatever costs you have incurred through phase one are going to be covered, so to speak, by your fees? Is that what I'm?
So we'll have a separate line item that lay out our development expenses, and then there'll be a dollar amount for that.
Okay.
As part of the phase two. And actually, you'll see that before, when we get into our, that comprehensive plan, you'll see that, you know, so we'll have like Three Lakes, mechanical, electrical, all the varying different buckets, if you will, and all those opportunities. And then at the bottom of all that, there'll be development expenses, and then we'll have a dollar amount with some of the detail there as well, just from a transparency standpoint.
Okay. So my notes on the development costs are basically consultant fees that were, that came about during phase one, but development fees would also cover or consider, I guess, the time that you have put into phase one, is that?
That Nexus has, not Rob Brown personally.
Right.
But yeah, but our architects.
But your team?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea what those costs will be?
It varies by district, but I mean, yeah, I mean, a community, a school, district your size, if we work through the list that's here, you know, between $60,000 to $100,000, I'm guessing. You know, D.C. Everest, Wausau, I mean, obviously they're much more substantial, so those expenses were much greater. But we'll provide that, a breakdown in that detail, and, you know, so you have an opportunity. But we'll provide that, a breakdown in that detail, and, you know, so you have an opportunity to see that, of course. And then all that would be covered by the referendum, so it wouldn't come out of your fund then.
Okay.
So it'd be very important for us to be very specific, as far as if there were items that, you know, we specifically wanted you to, hey, attack this, look at this, leave this alone, kind of thing, so that we don't incur costs on something that we weren't going to.
Yeah, I mean, so from a macro perspective, for instance, if you said, don't worry about our athletic fields, then certainly we could take that off. You know, if it were, you know, Classroom 102, don't look at the flooring. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to get that grant anywhere. Because if we have somebody coming out here studying, like, flooring, for instance, you wouldn't want to provide that plan.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Rob, way back when, when I told you that I would not sign any contract to commit to anything for the district, remember those days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because this is a board-driven school district, as it should be. I made it very clear to you that it might not go to a referendum. And we, we've been talking referendum, but we're understanding that explanation I've given, we depend on a referendum operational to keep us going. That is our blood, our lifeline. We may have funds that we have saved, that we have put to the side, that we have earned, that would still be, you know, a smaller base project. It makes me nervous when I hear $10 million, but I don't get all the costs of architecture and et cetera, you know where I'm going. So I just wanted to be very clear in the public format that this does not mean referendum. This does not equal referendum.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no matter how large or small a project the district does, all of that could be a Phase Two. It doesn't, or not, I mean, many times it goes to referendum, but certainly, it'll be up to the community, to the board to determine, do you move forward with a referendum or not? And there are other buckets, other funding mechanisms that, you know, could apply as well.
And I also don't want to give the impression that I'm against a referendum, because for the cost efficiency and the pennies on the dollar, the bang for the buck is my terminology. You know, it might be really worth our consideration, but I just don't want to feel like we're pegged into this is the path before, that's all before the board.
Correct. And, yeah, and I apologize if I was getting across this.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
No, and that's good, because it's, you know, this is your district, you know, ultimately you have to determine what makes sense and how you want to go about funding.
Thank you.
So if we have a list of like 20 projects, just throwing it out, whatever, out there, is there a minimum of those 20 projects we have to pick to be done? I mean, can we just pick one? Can we pick 15? Can we pick 18? Can we pick two? I mean-
You can, you can pick one if you want. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, you have a comprehensive plan, and it'll be up to you to determine what is, what do you want to tackle now? And, you know, part of this, you know, assessment will be from a funding standpoint, you know, how do you go about paying these things? And certainly, as Terry mentioned, you have access to other funding, there may be grants available outside of a referendum. You know, is referendum a consideration? I mean, if it's a consideration, doesn't mean you have to follow that. Yeah, so, I mean, at the end of the day, it's up to you guys to determine what you want your Phase Two to look like. And we'll show you, hopefully, that there are other opportunities to fund projects than just referendums, well.
Speaking of grants, do you guys have anybody on your staff that helps the school along? If you guys are aware of those type of specific grants that might help the district?
Yes, and so grants, rebates, and if, if there are those out there and they're applicable to Three Lakes, we'll be applying for them. You know, and certainly, we'll let Terry know, we'll let you know. And we may have a couple of questions. Some of them are very specific around, you know, whether it's athletic fields or your CT space, you know, it's, we might need information, we'll ask for it, but otherwise, we'll provide the packet that the district will have to submit.
Okay.
Same thing with rebates.
You're covered. Stacy?
Okay.
Yeah? Michelle?
Yes, I have a question for Ben answer.
Terry, how about you?
Yes.
Any input on your end?
Well, I just, my input is, this is a big undertaking, and we're building a relationship like this that could involve years. We want to make sure it's the right fit for the district. That's why I asked the clarifying question that I did, because we are a smaller district. It could result in smaller projects. Our community survey may come back that, no, we will not support a referendum, because we've given you the, the ability to manage funds operationally and with your staff and personnel, and our expectation is that you figure it out. So that's why I wanted to make that very clear. Not to say that we don't have an extremely supportive community, and they're very wise. They will understand economically, you know, how far we can make a dollar go and what that would result in when it came down to, but that's down the road, you know? So I just felt we needed to really have all of those questions clarified and answered. As far as my comfort with working with Nexus, bringing this to the school board, I feel that we are in a good place. I feel comfortable. I feel that we've established what both sides are looking for, so I am comfortable, Mike, with where we're at.
Great. All right. Anybody prepared to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Nexus Solutions for development of the Three Lakes School District Facilities Long Range Plan as presented.
Second.
All right, any other questions?
Just a quick comment. Rob, really appreciate you, the personal touch. You coming, you coming out, you doing the walk around, you being, being here, being prepared, it really, and, and coming again. Like you said, it's easy to Zoom, but means a lot that, that you put in the labor, so thank you.
Very good. All right, so we have a motion on the table, and I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for coming out tonight. All right, so we're skipping over F, Carl's Transport, and going to G, Consider Approval of the Safe Return Continuity Plan and Blue Jay Return Plan of Winter 2023.
Okay, as part of the SR3 funding or the ARPA grant money, this is a requirement that was put in place. As I shared with you before, this has changed very little, except that we have added what we have on the website for our winter plan. It's written based on what the CDC recommendations are. There are no real changes. The language that has to be used is very prescriptive, so there's not the allowance for wordsmithing. Jen has worked with me to put that together and get it updated. We are required by law to do this and have it on our website until September 2023. So you'll probably see this come one more time as a tweaked version. We don't change the original plan, but we have to show that we have put eyes on it from the district level, and then that the board is aware that this has been updated as we go forward. So with that, I've included it in your packet. You probably saw very little changes. There was a few minor, as far as the wording on our actual winter plan, to reflect more of the CDC language as they evolved, but my request would be that you would go ahead and approve the updated plan.
All right, so we have a recommendation for Terry to approve this. Is someone willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Safe Return Continuity Plan and Blue Jay Return Plan, Winter 2023, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes 4-0. Next, we go to facilities improvements, summer maintenance projects, Three Lakes School Report.
Okay, and I, I have Dave Kirby with us here tonight. There's a few things that I want to bring to your attention. I'm not asking for action, that's why it is listed as an, a report, but it's a nice timely discussion to have, after especially the conversation we had with long-range plan and facility updates. We have some big topics that I want to hit on, and Dave, I'm gonna ask your preference. Would you like me to hit the big agenda and then you add to it? Or do you have a list that you'd like to kick off?
No, I think it's pretty much the list that we talked about.
It is the list we talked about.
It is.
And then you can beef it up a little, okay? Okay, so talking about current maintenance needs in the Three Lakes building facility.
Terry, can I ask you for a second? Dave, can you grab that? Didn't sound like the door shut. Can you give it a tug so we don't freeze carry out here?
Or set off a fire alarm. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, the first one I'm going to bring to your attention is something that Dave and I have been talking about since I've started here, and it's growing to become a bigger concern. I'm going to say it is the bleachers in the small gym. They look great. The, the guys here have done a phenomenal job with maintenance and repair and sanding and refurnishing, and I want to let you know right up front that we keep passing inspection because they're so old, they're grandfathered in. So I just want you to have that. And speaking with insurance, though, something that's been brought to my attention is that although they're grandfathered in, that doesn't necessarily mean that they are the safest or the best options. I bring this to you because this is probably the one, the one topic that I get more from public comment or concern than, than other things, except sports, but it's kind of tied to sports, is, is they are steep, they are older, they don't move in and out very well at all anymore, and getting the, the railings or trying to update and improve them, the costs, believe it or not, are excessive. It's almost more efficient to look at new, updated, better, a better version than trying to invest in bringing in some kind of railing or safety guards. The other thing that was pointed out to me, too, is, not that we say they're falling down and we're worried about somebody getting hurt, but we know that because of the steepness and the little bit difference of the field, we don't want to have an injury come our way and then be saying, you know, this has been on our mind. So, Dave brings this to me as probably your top of the list item. Am I okay to say that for you? Okay. So we did a little bit more digging on that, and we've gotten some initial quotes, and I want you to know, we would bring that formally next month, but, but it's a spendy project. We're looking at around $100,000 to $105,000 to replace those bleachers, which in the school world, that's just what it is when you think of the amount. A little bit further down the line, we've looked at reclaiming that wood, repurposing that wood. I've talked with Nate. Nate says, yes, we would repurpose that wood. It could be used for anything from plaques to projects. Dave and Nate will figure out a way for storage. We would take the, the bleachers apart ourselves, because that saves us $12,000 if we're willing to do the un-install, is that a word? And then scrap metal, the scrap piecing of it, which, little side note, we would like to get the new scoreboard into the small gym as well, because we use it so much for everything, and like with a large gym, with the network that broadcasts and stuff, the school board, the scoreboards were so old, they couldn't work with that, we couldn't get the parts for it or anything. And that would be about a $12,000 cost. So not to say that we're doing that right now, or that will ultimately be the result, but it does give us a little bit of cost effectiveness there. So I wanted you to be aware of that one. Dave, do you want to add to that?
No, that's, yeah, in talking with the companies, the one quote we did get, I received from a, I asked Jeff Baseman, who he would recommend, and that was the company that I've got the quote from, and I also have talked to another company today, and they'll be sending us a quote also.
Okay.
And those would be all manually, or all power assisted, moving out and putting away. They would be powered like, like the big gym is. And, and that's where we're at for that.
And the power source is already there through the kitchen hookup, so-
Power source would be pulled, it's three phase from the kitchen panel, yes, and going just across the hallway and then into the gym.
So we're not looking at excessive additional costs for that?
There are all things you can do in and out.
See, I'm really becoming a maintenance guy, you know? The second item is also related to our gyms. Our, in our large gym, our bleachers, you realize that they're pulled out, there are some repairs that we're going to do. Dave said he can handle that. Brad Volkman has asked us to consider, in looking at the way we place our athletes, they sit on the bottom row. If you think about other districts, there's generally a sectioned out area, and then there's player seats, and that separates our athletes from our audience, our crowd, our fans. And we could make that happen, which would require us to take two rows of bleachers out from those, that set. That would come off the bottom, of course, it would come off the back. So that would be a maintenance cost that we would be getting bids on, to take those two back rows off, slide it back, allow that buffer zone, if you will, between players and fans, and allow for the coaches to have their coaching area with their athletes, and that not be right in the lap of our crowd.
And then at the same, excuse me, but at the same time with that, we would be getting the quotes for the handrails from the aisleways?
Yes, for the large gym. And that wasn't quite a staggering cost wise. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, and then Dave is getting some quotes. We realize that our football soccer fields and our practice fields, I've been pushing that too, have to be in much better shape. It could be just planning and maintenance, but we also want to make sure that we get a good feel for what would an irrigation system cost? What kind of water usage would we be using? So he's working on that, so you have an idea of what that might look like. This is an example of, if it's something that we find out that we can do much more cost effectively here, or with our team of crew, how to do it, we wouldn't want to be looking at adding this in necessarily to the long-range plan. Okay? Dave, others?
No, and that just falls hand in hand with that. If, if we're looking maybe at the long-range plan, we look at, you know, we've thrown the idea, okay, are we gonna do turf? Are we gonna do stuff like that? That's a huge expense, but as we, then we would maybe not look at doing the irrigation system, you know, some of those things. We'd like to get a feel of what, what everybody was, so, so that we don't do something that we just abandon in two years or three years down the road. So, that's some of those planning.
Anything else on that one?
No.
Okay. Then moving to the kitchen. Our dishwasher machine, believe it or not, is over 50 years old. I think we've gotten our value out of it. It's getting to the point that we are going to need to replace. Jill has been working very closely with Kerry. Kerry, thank you for all the legwork you've been doing on this as well. We do believe that it's probably time to invest in a new unit, so Dave is working on quotes for that. Otherwise, the new curtains, as they're called, the other parts and such, it's adding up, it's not becoming cost efficient. Kerry and Jill are working on a couple of grants that look quite favorable, that we may get some funding towards that, so highly encouraged in that department. Along with that, a refrigerated salad bar, Dave's getting quotes on that, too. Jill, as you know, has really moved us forward in using the local farm-to-table, the fresh and nutrients of the foods are very important to her and her team, and so we're looking at some grant funding for that as well. Questions on those two? Okay, and then we are watching our water pH, and this has become more of an issue. We've had- Um, we've had occasional leaks, but this past year I'd say we're springing more pinhole leaks. Um, our system is old enough that our shut-off valves are corroded, for lack of a better word. Um, where if we have a, a leak, and this has happened probably three times this year, or more, that we have to-
Twice last week, yeah.
Twice last week, okay, that's a good way. Um, we don't, we don't have the ability to just shut down this section, we have to shut down the water for the entire building. So I've directed Dave to go ahead and, um, get the, get the tool and the parts that we can start doing this in little phases, but we are going to do a, a little bit bigger study of, this is general maintenance age of the building, um, and we have to be aware that we need water. So, Dave, you wanna add to that piece?
Um, yes, the, I had the tunnel come in and they did a pH study, and we are like six-five, we're, we're pretty neutral. So, I, I'm kinda wondering where we're getting the, where we're getting the leaching? Where, where, because even if you take a look at some of the fixtures and some of the drinking problems, we're seeing that, that green staining, which is copper. And so, um, I don't know why that's happening. So, that's some more questions we have to find out.
So, the water supply, is it, are we mostly copper?
Yes, yes.
And so, is this leaks right in the piping, or is it a fitting?
We've had, we've had them, we've had them at fittings, I've had them right in the middle of the pipe.
Oh.
I've had them where hangers were, but it was copper on copper, um, and so it's very questionable why. You know, and there's not, I don't think there's that much vibration or expansion and contraction in that pipe to where we're, we're rubbing it.
So you believe it's interior corrosion, thinning the walls?
Yeah, and it could be the sediment, that, you know, because when we do shut the water off, and then, just like you probably maybe do at home, if you ever shut your water off at home and then surge it back on, you get a bunch of-
Sure.
Yeah.
Slugs that come through, well, and then, so then we've talked about it with this, um, we purged the whole system last summer for, for an hour or so. You know, we're just trying to eliminate some of that's, that residue that's in there in the buildup. And so maybe that's something we do more often, uh, at different intervals throughout the year, where we may purge that.
Is this in one section of the, of the building?
No, it ends up in the, in the holes part.
Oh boy.
Yeah. And the most interesting, the worst, our worst waterfall is in the course of fifty-six way, uh, the far north, northeast corner.
Sure.
That's the old, that's where we went to grade school.
We did?
Long time ago, we walked up both ways. Um, but, but that's, you know, that's some of those, that's another project where I'm gonna get in the tunnels and see what's there, to see what we would have to do to, to, to update that.
So we're on it.
Yeah.
And then, uh, finally, um, this is a me thing, I've asked Dave to follow up on our windows. We have several windows that are not energy efficient anymore, or there's separation, there's leaks. I look at this window, 'cause this is a prime example of, of poor quality, um, Katie Bodick's room, we've done some repairs in there, but that's an example of a, uh, the windows are not what I think they should be, and I guess I fall under they should last forever. But Dave is contacting or has contacted, um, the contractor, manufacturer, to do a walkthrough and be looking at our windows, identifying what needs to be more immediate repair and what could be more long-term. Dave?
These are, yeah, these are Powell windows, so, you know, we're not to throw them under the bus, but, um, they are Powell windows. And we, they have a tournament calling, and I'm still waiting, and I'll call them again, so, I'll keep on.
And then the final thing is, we're going to, um, put in another wa- watering station in the, was that the large gym?
In the big gym.
In the big gym, for water bottles and such.
Yeah, the south side of the, on the south side, uh, going towards the locker rooms, that, that unit hasn't worked for a while. So, looking at putting a water fill station in there, and, um, we'll, we'll get rid of that other unit and be able to put that in there.
So those are big ticket items, as they say, for Three Lakes facilities.
Yeah.
Summer. Any other questions for us on that?
What are you gonna do to replace the jungle gym when you take the, if you take the bleachers out? I just had two kids that were under their all game last night.
This is really fun, right?
Well, see, we do have an option for curtains. We could get curtains out of there, you know? But yes, they, they won't be able to find quarters and everything else that fall in there, because-
Just one, one suggestion, I guess with the bleachers, and Terry, Justin, this applies to you a little bit, is, you know, to kinda keep some of the public off of those old ones, is when we can, let's utilize the big gym. I mean, if we have to move a practice from the big gym, maybe into the little gym, half hour early, so that we can utilize those, might not be the worst idea to try and save us from a possible happening? I don't know, suggestion?
Yeah, it's on, on our minds more.
All right, anything else on that one?
Nope.
All right, very good, thank you for that report, uh, sounded like a busy summer, so. Uh, next we go to the school forest camp three update report.
Okay, let's see, we have some notes here. I'm just gonna make a couple of comments, and then I'm going to defer to Justin, we've only got a few things here. Um, we continue, uh, working with MSA, as I mentioned last meeting, three weeks ago. Uh, they had received a request from the, uh, Department of Natural Resources on about twenty-two points, as far as they wanted further clarification. Just got that last night, that that has been submitted to the DNR through MSA, and it's back under review. Um, so that's where we stand with that. I was gonna have Justin talk about that, but I figured I could just throw that right in there. Yep, um, the other piece that I wanted to share with you is that, uh, just very factual, we've received information that, um, the, um, there could be a legal litigation in which the district would be involved in, that would be directed towards us with a concern, you know, as far as developing a trap range on the school forest property. Um, that is what we posted it in close, and that is the factual information, we've been made aware, and that's where it stands. This past, I should give you the exact date, but within the past ten days or so, we received, um, a courtesy, uh, notification from, uh, Pine Spock, that they are working on a case with representing a party who is looking to bring a concern of the approval of the, the, um, project, um, approval permitting, um, through the DNR. So that is not against the district, but it is being brought against the DNR in issuing the approval, and we're named in that. So that is not scheduled yet, but it is scheduled to be heard in, um, Oneida County Clerk, uh, Circuit Court. And that is the information I have on that. And, uh, I guess that's, that's the facts that I have at this point. I just wanted to make sure that we brought it out there in public, um, that we're going forward, you know, still with the, the permitting process. Everything as far as, um, with the DNR is still in pending hold, as they work through these different phases of our project. The MSA is responsible for getting us those plans and such, and we don't have that yet. Um, and I'm just gonna keep updating you as I'm getting updates.
All right, very good.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, next we have district related-
Did Justin have anything more?
Justin, I'm sorry.
No, the only thing I had was that we are aware that MSA has provided all the clarifications and questions answered. Uh, as of today, we got that email from MSA.
Thank you.
Oh, we're sold.
All right, very good, thank you. Next we go to district related positive happenings. All right.
I just have one today, um, Honey Rock reached out to us with a grant opportunity, and we did set that up, Todd and I worked with them. Um, our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, in a combined effort between the two schools, did a, were set up as a winter activity out there to do some team building, and, and they were gonna do, um, Todd helped me with this, I think it was broom ball.
Broom balls.
No shoeing.
Tubing, snow shoeing.
Snow shoeing, and then we sent fourth grade, uh, yesterday, fifth grade today, and today's was modified, I think they did some rock wall climbing, um, some small tubing hills, and what was the third?
Some board games, ping pong, foosball.
They have to stay inside of the weather, so. Yeah, so we still, we wanted that opportunity to, to build some camaraderie between the two buildings, and Honey Rock had that timely grant and set that up for us, so, thank you to them, and we've got our sixth grade culminating tomorrow, so, talk to them again, it'll probably be the modified activities, but kinda missed our winter window. Kids seem to have fun, uh, Mr. Walt said it was a good time today, so, grateful for that opportunity.
I'll just follow that up, we have another state qualifier for conservation speeches, and Addison Shanek from fifth grade, so she'll be going down, I wanna say another month, but Wednesday, I believe, so.
Excellent.
We had our four K open house on Monday. So we have sixteen registered here in Three Lakes, and five so far in Sugar Camp.
All right. So that was a good turnout?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
It was, yeah.
Good.
I had the opportunity to join, uh, Mr. Vodas and his global science class today, on the annual ice fishing trip to Maple Lake. So, the weather was, was a little inclement, but, um, went from rain to snow with the wind, all in, in a six-hour period. So, I'd like to thank Mr. Vodas for organizing the event, um, the students learned everything from drilling the holes, to setting up the tip-ups, to catching the fish. Four or five of them learned, um, that Normans have sharp teeth. Um, they need any band-aid to their first aid kits though, but, uh, some valuable experiences out there, had a blast. Um, caught more fish this year than we've caught probably in the last four or five years combined, so that was, that was good. So, so I'd also like to thank, uh, Three Lakes Fish and Wildlife Committee for donating, um, the minnows, the five dozen minnows that we used. And it was interesting, when we came back, one of the, uh, Three Lakes Fish and Wildlife members stopped me and asked how the oxygen levels were on Maple Lake. Kinda like they don't, didn't have any, we didn't get that scientific out there. But I did let them know that the fish were very active. In the years past, we've gone end of February, early March, and because of the low oxygen levels, the fish, you can see them on the electronics, it was tough to get a bite, they just weren't feeding actively. So, the report was we caught more fish this year, uh, the minnows were very lively, so therefore the oxygen levels might be, should be pretty good. So they weren't gonna turn the aerators on quite yet. So, it was, it was, it was good again, thanks to Mr. Vodas and Three Lakes Fish and Wildlife for providing that opportunity.
Yeah, good lifelong experience, right?
Sure. Half of the students did not have a fishing license, or had never been-
Yeah.
-had the experience before, so it was kinda an eye-opener for us that would help that experience-
Right.
-lakes right in their backyard, um, will be utilized, so hopefully, we'll begin that lifelong joy for the outdoors.
Exactly. Very good.
Sorry, a couple, uh, first one, thank you, Terry and everybody else that fills in where I'm gone, but, uh, last week I had the opportunity to attend the state principals convention. And, good, good, good professional development, and a lot of good ideas. Uh, but one thing that stuck out to me was the first, the, the big keynote, that speaker that was addressing the whole, uh, group of principals was, um, he, his presentation was a lot about, um, uh, letting your community know what's going on inside your building, because, you know, o- only twenty percent of your community statistically has, has kids in your, in your school, or knows of kids in your school, and are related to these kids in your school. Anyway, long story short, his presentation was, so, you should do this, you should do this, you should do this. And as he was going through his slides of, of ways that you tell your story to the, to your community, uh, I was like, Three Lakes does that, Three Lakes does that, Three Lakes does that. And, and largely that's Jen West, because if, if you follow, I'm not a big social media guy myself personally, a lot of people are. And i- i- if you tune into our Facebook page, you tune into our website, you can see a story, and, and read about a story. And, and, and the Blue Jay Buzz, and the Robin Buzz, and Rob Report, I should say. Um, so, kudos Jen, thank you, 'cause that's largely you, I know people get you the information too, but, um, it's, it's really, it was really cool to see that, you know, a- a- and as I'm sitting around the principals, uh, people are going, oh yeah, we should do that, we should, I'm going, Three Lakes is doing that, Three Lakes is doing that. So thank you, Jen, for your work on that. Um, second thing is, that semester we had a couple of new students meld into the high school. Um, both are, uh, not surprisingly welcomed in with open arms by staff and students, uh, to the Blue Jay family. Uh, one of them is from Poland, foreign exchange student, and I, I just wanna, uh, Ega's been such a wonderful, uh, just in a few weeks here, has, has been such a great experience for her, I think, in talking with her, and, uh, for, for our kids to, to experience. We're not, we're not a very diverse school, folks, and, and so, when we have someone coming in from a different country, that's, i- i- it is going to be a wonderful experience, it already has been. Um, really a cool thing, and I wanna take that opportunity to, if anybody knows of anyone who's looking to host a family, or, excuse me, a family that's really to host a student coming in, uh, please let us know, because we do get contacted from time to time by agencies that organize this, looking for host families. And just in the last, uh, couple of months, we've gotten two of them, uh, I, I, I think we're a pretty good grab, like, people want to land kids into this, uh, here for, for the experience of, of being, uh, in the Three Lakes community and, um, in our school. So, um, if you know of anybody interested in, in hosting a, a foreign exchange student, please let us know, and we'll put that out to, to our, our folks. But, um, it's been a great experience with, it, it, it's been a while since we've been able to do foreign exchange students.
Yeah.
It's, it, this reminds us how great it is for, for all parties involved, so, that's all I have.
Very good. Covered all our bases, huh? All right, very good, thank you all for contributing. Next we go to the WASB correspondence slash updates.
Um, we do have, today at the Capitol, I put the information on the table for you, March twenty-second, um, in case any of you are interested in making that trek. Um, something that I am doing with, uh, my PAC exec group, that would be myself, Scott Foster, um, Andrea Sheridan, um, and Brent can't make it with us. Um, I think it's, it's the four of us. We are going on March second to Madison, we are scheduled to meet with our legislators for a day. We decided that we want to not only expect them to come to us, we're going to them. I feel really proud about this, because this is exactly what Captain McCloskey would encourage us to be doing. Um, and they're very excited about us coming to their home court, if you will. And we will be talking about the needs of, of our CISA nine region, um, having a little bit of lunch, getting a feel for what we can do to be, you know, um, advocates on our end for public education. So, looking forward to that, and we'll be able to report out that to you next month.
All right, very good. All right, uh, next we will move into executive session. Uh, six A, adjourning to executive session, Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, one G to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice with respect to potential litigation pertaining to the school forest trap shooting range. And B, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, one C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to consider staff contracts. And, and then following that, we'll reconvene to open session, to reconsider motions on matters taken up in exec. So, I will take a roll call vote, um, to move into executive session, Stacy?
We need a, we need a formal motion.
I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, motion please.
I'll make a motion, move to executive session.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All right, so Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right. We will move into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here tonight.